I call to order the March 21st, 2017 meeting of the Arvada Planning Commission. Ms. Brown, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Randy Caswell, John Kraus, T.O. Owens.
Here.
David Goff.
Here.
Patricia Connell.
Here.
Steve Hannan.
Here.
I move to excuse Ms. Caswell and Mr. Kraus from the meeting. Commissioners, please cast your vote. Okay, we show Goff. Whoops, oop, oop, did it again. I need to block somebody out here. It says not everybody's voted.
Oh, you know what I do appreciate is you block the blank one, you put a lot on there.
Okay, oh, yes.
I'm sorry, that was my call.
Okay. Please cast your votes. That's better. Okay. Goff, Hannan, Connell, and Owens in favor and none opposed. All right. The minutes of the March 7th, 2017 meeting have been submitted for approval. Are there any additions or corrections to the meeting minutes? All right, no corrections. There be no corrections, the minutes stand approved as printed. General business, there are no general business items to discuss this evening. Reports, there are no reports, report items to discuss this evening. Pledge of allegiance, I now ask everybody to stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Petitions and communications. This is a time when anyone may address the commission regarding items that are not listed as public hearings on tonight's agenda. The public hearings included on tonight's agenda are 8200 Grandview Avenue rezoning and the Learning Experience Preliminary Development Plan. Additionally, we ask that you hold comments you may have regarding any application that has been filed with the city or is likely to be filed with the city until the public hearing on those items where we will welcome your comments. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the commission regarding anything Okay, no, thank you. All right, that's okay. At this time, I would like to explain the procedure for public hearings. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation. After the presentation, I will ask those in favor of the applicant to speak than those in opposition to speak. The applicant will then be given an opportunity for rebuttal. After all testimony has been heard, the public input portion of the hearing will be closed and questions will be taken from the planning commission. I would now like to swear in anyone that wishes to speak in any public hearing matter before this commission this evening, please rise, raise your right hand, and I'll swear you in now. All right. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give in matters before this commission is a truth and nothing but the truth? If so, please answer "I do." Thank you, you may proceed. The public hearing on tonight's agenda include Z-2016-0010, 8200 Grandview Avenue rezoning. Staff, are there any posting notification requirements?
Yes, there are three posting notification requirements. Notice in the paper, which the city has taken care of, there's a posting requirement on the property, and a notification, a mailing notification. Staff has received the affidavit of mailing and the posting log, and both items are in order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any additions or corrections to the staff report?
No, not at this time.
Thank you. The staff report, posting log, and affidavit of mailing are made a permanent part of the record. I would also like to enter correspondence and opposition to this zoning from Stephanie DeJonge dated March 19, 2017. Is there a representative of the, excuse me, staff will make a brief presentation of the case.
Good evening, Commissioners. The case before you is a proposed rezone from the RL Zone District to the RI Zone District. As detailed in the staff report, the existing RL zoning results in a home location that does not comply with the minimum 25-foot front setbacks. The proposed rezoning, if granted, would bring the existing building location into compliance with the minimum 18-foot front setbacks in the RI Zone District. Staff finds that the proposed RI Zone District is the most appropriate district, given the existing RI zoning across Balsam to the east and the fact that the existing non-conforming building would become conforming. Therefore, staff presents this case with the recommendation of approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a representative of the applicant present? Would you please step to the podium and state your name, spell it please, and provide your address for the record.
My name is Sean Sellers, S-H-A-U-N, S-E-L-L-E-R-S. My primary residence is 8200 Grandview Avenue, Arvada, Colorado.
Sean, I'm sorry. Can you just close your application?
Sorry, is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Do you want me to repeat that?
No.
Okay. The primary reason for us to rezone the lot is to put an addition on to the back and also put a second story on. In reference, real quickly, in reference to the letter received, it's my understanding that the lot would be too small for multi-residential use such as a duplex. But as you can see from the slides up there, the house is currently a single-story. If the lot was vacant today and if it was, if we built the existing house on the lot, it would meet current setbacks. The setbacks are actually seven foot into the property on the Balsam side, into the house on the Balsam side. There we go. Other than that, the porch actually does meet current zoning or will meet it because there is a slight variance there. But as you can see on the Balsam side, which is the north-south street there, the current setbacks are 25 feet and the east side of the house, which is the Balsam side, is at 18 feet. So rezoning it, we'll put it into that plane. The second picture shows the proposed addition, which will meet the new setbacks. That's all I have at this time.
All right. I will now open the hearing for comments from the public. First, those who are in favor of the application. Is there anyone, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Are you wishing to speak in opposition to the applicant?
I'm not, I'm not in opposition to the applicant.
Please come forward. Please state your name and spell it for the record and give your address, please.
Hi, Commissioners, I'm Cindy Kreitzer, 9200 Grandview Avenue, very close to 8200 Grandview Avenue. The reason I'm here is simply that I don't really understand why we've put this poor man through this entire process of having to come before the planning commission and have a neighborhood meeting and go through all of this when he could have very easily come to the Board of Adjustment and requested setback variances instead. And it would have made the whole entire process much simpler for the poor man. That's my only comment. I don't really, I don't have any opposition at all to the project. I love the little house, and it looks to me like the addition to the top will be just mine. So thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the applicant? Seeing none. Applicant who want an opportunity for rebuttal? All right. Well, at this time, I close the public input portion of the hearing. I now open the hearing for discussion, questions, and comments from the members of the planning commission. Are there any comments or discussions? Yes. Mr. Owens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I actually have the same question Ms. Kreitzer had and would be pretty interested to hear from staff because it would seem to me like a variance to the current zoning is far less intrusive than changing the zoning. And honestly, changing the zoning potentially changes the character of the lot. So I would, in fact, be in favor of sending this to the Board of Adjustments and have them have a variance on the current zoning. But I'm interested to see why we took this route.
I think there was a feeling at the staff level that this is a cleaner way to make it a conforming lot with a variance. Obviously, a hardship needs to be shown. There's not necessarily, in staff's opinion, a hardship related to addition to the second floor. So we felt this was a much cleaner way to get a lot that would be conforming in terms of setbacks to allow for the second story.
I appreciate that. I wonder, just for expediency of the applicant and for the citizens of our city, if having them go to the Board of Adjustments, which is a pretty short timeframe, doesn't require a bunch of neighborhood meetings, might have been better and if then they weren't successful offering an alternate route. Also, having sat on and chaired the Board of Adjustments for a number of years, I would argue that there is a very clear practical difficulty in the fact that the house predates zoning. And so by no fault of the current owner or of the owner that originally built the house, they seem to have a built-in practical difficulty. I find it distasteful that we're changing the zoning, honestly. I think that the zoning, the zoning change potentially changes the character of the lot. A variance does not change the character of the lot. The zoning change potentially allows multifamily on the lot. A variance would not. And I would argue very strongly that the people of this neighborhood have been very clear that they don't want more multifamily in the neighborhood. So we're opening them up for that, clearly not by this user, but the use would be there by right moving forward.
That is correct in terms of the zoning, but given the size of the lot, that is incorrect. It would not be able to support a multifamily.
So we're saying we couldn't, they couldn't have an apartment upstairs and downstairs? They couldn't subdivide that home and have somebody live upstairs and live downstairs separately?
Other than an ADU, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hannan.
I share Commissioner Owens's comments. It just doesn't make a whole lot of sense. When I look at page five, the lot 8220 seems to have a similar issue in that it's, seems to be built over our lawn. Is this the only house in the neighborhood that we have to do this to? Are there others we're going to have to look for? This just doesn't seem to be the type thing that should be zoning changes. It should be, a house was built before there was such a thing in zoning, back in the days when we believed in block forms in Arvada. And to make a citizen of Arvada go through the bureaucratic judicial process that we're making, quasi-judicial process that we're making go through seems like a little bit of overkill for somebody to put a second story on a gorgeous house.
Are there any further questions or discussion? All right, seeing no further discussion, is there a motion? Commissioner Owens.
I move that Z-2016-0010, 8200 Grandview Avenue rezoning from RL residential low-density to RI one and two-family residents located at 8200 Grandview Avenue be recommended to City Council for approval. This motion is based on the findings of fact and approval criteria on page eight of the staff report. I'd like to add that I think we've put these folks through enough here. And so I will be in favor of this motion, but I think this is the wrong way to accomplish this. But they've been dutiful citizens and this isn't a bad project.
Commissioner Hannan.
I also will be voting in favor of the motion because that's what you need. But it does seem to be a little bit overkill in this instance and in other instances such as this. That's why we have a Board of Adjustments.
Thank you. Commissioner Connell.
I am voting for it based on the opinions that have already been shared by the other two commissioners. And it just is a simple thing, and then that's why I am for it.
I will complete the cycle and I will say I'll be voting in favor. I appreciate you keeping it. I think it's a very beautiful home and in character with the neighborhood, so thank you. If there's no further discussion, motion is made. If there's no further discussion of the motion, please cast your vote. Commissioners Owens, Hannan, Connell, Goff, all in favor and none opposed. The motion is passed four to zero. Be sure to speak with staff as to when this item will be going before City Council. Thank you for your, thank you for bringing this forward this evening, and thank you for any comments from the audience. Thank you. Moving on to the second item on tonight's agenda, PDB 2016-0011, the Learning Experience Preliminary Development Plan. Staff, are there any posting or notification requirements?
Yes, three forms of notification were required. Publishing in the paper, which staff has taken care of, a letter, and a posting on the property. We have received the mailing affidavit and the posting log, and both items are in order.
Are there any additions or corrections to the staff report?
No, there are not.
Thank you. The staff report, posting log, and affidavit of mailing are made a permanent part of the record. I would also like to enter correspondence and opposition from Glenn Howard dated March
Thank you. The case before you is a proposed preliminary development plan for a 10,000-square-foot daycare facility on approximately 1.45 acres of PUD BP zone land. The proposed development complies with all base standards in the PUD BP Zone District with the exception of the rear setback, which the applicant is proposing to reduce from 10 feet to 6 feet 9 inches. Staff feels that this is a reasonable request, given the site constraints resulting from the location of the Crook Canal Box Culvert in Track B. Staff presents this case with the recommendation of approval, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a representative of the applicant present? Would you please step to the podium and state your name, spell it please, and provide your address for the record? And I will ask, I don't believe you were here initially, that I will raise your right hand and say, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give in matters before this commission is a truth, nothing but the truth? If so, answer "I do."
I do.
Thank you. May proceed.
My name is Dory Dowd, D-O-R-Y-D-O-U-D, and my address is 2010 Grove Street, Denver, 80211.
May proceed.
Thanks.
Excuse me, sir. Were you here when it was?
Yeah, I was here.
Okay, thank you.
Let me adjust this for the vertically challenged here. All right, come on, come on. Can you hear me? Okay. My name is Scott Boduch. I am with Rogue Architecture. My name, spelling is S-C-O-T-T-B-O-D-U-C-H. Rogue Architecture is, our address is 4100 Wadsworth Boulevard, Wheat Ridge, Colorado. I'm here as a representative of DND Properties, who, Dory, is here as the owner's rep. We're pleased to present this project to you, and we're excited about it for the Arvada community and what the Learning Experience daycare can bring to the community. You know, I think one of the things on this site has been a challenge. It's my understanding this site's been vacant for almost nine years. And as Jake pointed out, is Track B, which is kind of, you can see that coming through the site there where that existing culvert is, really takes up a good percentage of this lot and very difficult to get a building to fit within the space provided. We feel very, very good about the plan that we are presenting you tonight. We have worked with staff. We have worked with Freco, which is the Farmers Reservoir people, and working through the details on this site. I think the one request that we have is reducing the 10-foot setback on the back of the building to get this building to fit within that area and still meet our square footage requirements. The Learning Experience, they kind of fill you in a little bit on them. They are a national daycare childcare provider that they have started in Florida, and they are expanding aggressively out to the west coast. Colorado being, they've got currently six or seven locations open, and DND Properties is in the process of developing four or five more locations here in the Colorado area. But their model is a 10,000-square-foot building footprint and a 5,000-square-foot enclosed outdoor play area. This building footprint had to be retrofitted to this site to get it to work. So as part of that request of reducing the back setback, you know, we're going to meet all the local building requirements as far as that Arvada has adopted, as far as fire rating and building separation along that west property line. That area also, the sidewalk, will be completely fenced in, so it's, there's no concern of children or anybody exiting the building, going off the site there. They'll be funneled in to come out towards the front of the building. Let me see if I can, is there a pointer on this at all? Ah, okay. A little bit just about the site improvements. We're proposing a total of 44 parking stalls on-site. This is taking advantage of some of the existing parking stalls that are there currently. We are maintaining the existing access drives all around the entire site. This is to provide shared access, not only for this lot, but also for the adjacent car wash lots, as well as the retail to the south. There's an existing right end drive off of Indiana Street, and then there's also connection down on 64th to the south. All the site lighting has been designed based on city requirements. We are maintaining some of the existing lighting that is currently in place. The existing landscaping, we're also going to maintain around the perimeter. There are some locations that have, are due for, you know, repair or replacement, and we are working with SAF to make sure that gets taken care of as part of this project. There we go. We got it. The building architecture is based off of TLE's standard prototype. However, we have incorporated some design features based on just the local Indiana marketplace PUD, but as well as some of the buildings across the street. I've taken advantage of doing some gabled roofs with some dormers. Materials, we're tying in with the red brick of the existing development, looking at metal roofing, which is inherent with a couple of the facilities, not only within the development but also across the street. We're also looking at, you know, some fiber cement siding as the main building facade around the perimeter. The entrance is projected and pulled out from the building to provide a cover for customer or the parents dropping off their children. And we've also provided awnings in the play area over the patios to provide screening for the children. I've also, there we go. This is the, that was the front elevation and the right side elevation, which is the playground elevation. The next two is the west elevation, which is adjacent facing the car wash, and then the south elevation, which is facing down towards the retail development. Next couple of slides are just 3D renderings of the facility. This is looking from the southeast, and you can see is the covered porch that we have pulled out to provide cover at the main entry doors. Also, to the left side there, you can kind of see some of the fencing that we are proposing around the perimeter sidewalk for security and safety of the kids, as well as screen wall for the electrical service that we are proposing for the project. And then this view is looking from the northeast, and then you can see on the right side of the enclosed playground area for the children. I will note that TLE security with them is very important, and we did see the email that came through from Glenn Howard, and, you know, security is of the utmost importance to TLE. I mean, they don't allow their kids, the children, out of any supervision, whether from a parent or from a teacher. So the parents are required to park their car, bring the children in, log them in, and at that point, they're totally secure within the building or within the playground with teachers. The perimeter fencing is provided to maintain when they do their fire alarm drills, that the kids don't go running off. They're constantly in a secured area as much as possible. So with that, just would like to say thank you for your consideration on this application, and appreciate your time this evening and at this point, open it up for any questions.
I will now hear, open the hearing for comments from the public. For those, first of those in favor of the applicant? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the application? All right, seeing none. At this time, I will close the public input portion of the hearing. I will now open the hearing for discussion, questions, and comments from members of the Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think this is a pretty challenging lot. I think, given that box culvert and the size of the building that would have to be there, I think this is a really good project. I like it, and I think, I think they've done a really good job of getting a building within the footprint. So I'm going to support this for sure.
Commissioner, Commissioner Hannan.
I'll also be in support. My concern, however, remains with traffic there at Indiana and 64th. It's hard to find a busier intersection, maybe Ward and 64th, but other than that, it's pretty busy, and we're going to add more parents coming in and out. Trying to get in and out of that place is going to be difficult. So it is something, from a traffic standpoint, that concerns me.
Commissioner Connell.
This is more a question of staff. On the staff recommendations, item two, that the, it must formally approve the proposed development prior to approval of the FDP by the city of Arvada. The water or the issue there, what does that entail, and are there any problems because It was the, I wrote down, from the acronym, I wrote down the name of it.
Yes, the Farmers Reservoir and Irrigation Company. I'm sorry, I thought I had made a mistake in here. No, that is correct. They are a, one of our referral agencies, so they have been getting copies of this plan from the very beginning. However, it is our understanding that they have their own separate process that the applicant has to go through in order to develop on their property. And so the applicant is aware of that, and they are working toward that. So if it turns out that Farmers Reservoir, an irrigation company, does not require them to go through a formal process, we'll at least want some sort of explicit approval from a representative. from a representative of Farmer's Reservoir and Irrigation Company, is all that is. That's just really a formality, but I wanted to make sure that it was put in the staff report and that everybody was well aware of it.
Thank you.
So I have some questions of the applicant. So looking at the, I think it's, looks like a great fit for the property. I don't live that far down the road from there, so I'm familiar with the area. But the question I have, and I'm glad to see this is a solid fence, what we're looking at here, but is the perimeter of the playground area, is that a solid fence? And how tall is it?
The playground is a solid fence all the way around. Yes. And again, that, the concern that TLE has with that is they don't want outsiders looking into the playground while the kids are playing. Again, the security to them is very important, and that's just even the visual security is important. So yes, that is the intent.
Okay. Approximately, how tall is the fence?
That is a six-foot fence around the playground, and then along the walkways, it's only a four-foot high fence.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned a fire drill. If there was a fire drill in this facility, would they be walked out to the parking lot or walked out into the playground?
They're generally, they walk out to the front of the building. I mean, I can't designate exactly where, but, I mean, that's up to the operations, but they have, just like you would with a normal public school, is they do monthly fire drills to make sure the children know what they need to do in case of an emergency.
What are the hours of this facility?
Generally, 6:30 to 6:30.
Thank you.
Monday through Friday, they're not open on the weekends, so.
All right, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Are there any further, oh, Commissioner Owens. All right, if there's no further discussion, motion?
Awesome. I move the PDP 2016-0011, the Learning Experience Preliminary Development Plan located at 14815 West 64th Avenue be recommended to City Council for approval. Subject to the conditions stated on the staff report, items one and two and page 10, this motion is based on findings of fact and approval criteria on pages eight and nine of the staff
Motion is made. Is there any further discussion of the motion? All right, seeing there's no further discussion, commissioners, please cast your vote. All right. Goff, Hannon, Cunnell, and Owens in favor and none opposed. The motion passed four to zero. So applicant, please speak with staff as to when this item will be going before City Council. Thank you, and thank you, citizens, for your participation this evening. Other items, staff, are there any other items to consider this evening?
Just for your next meeting, which will be April 4th, and there will be one item, which is a right-of-way vacation in Cundallos.
Thank you. I will be absent from that meeting. Anything further? All right, we are adjourned.